The meeting is called to order at 7:00 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the agenda of September 24th, 2019 be approved? Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the approval of minutes of September 10th, 2019 as submitted? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes? Approval of requests to dispose of unserviceable textbooks? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. No treasurer's report tonight. No special reports. No visitors. So, Levia, right away, it's your turn.
That was really fast.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Just a few things this week. At Harris Hill, students in their respective buses are competing to see how long they can keep their buses on going fully free. Every day in Indian Landing, the third graders in Mrs. Crowell's class are able to choose flexible seating in either a bouncy chair, beanbag, pillows, and so many more things around the room. First grade students at Scribner learn how to use sign language, and they even learn how to sign the pledge. Students in Mr. Prey's Bay Trail class spun pizza dough to learn about the forces of gravity and centripetal force. Students in gym got to experience the ropes course and are eventually moving to the flying squirrel. A group of Bay Trail students had the opportunity to participate in the Project Enrichment Field Trip to the National Women's Hall of Fame induction ceremony. At the high school, senior and my good friend, Carson Hobler, received a perfect score on his SAT. Each class decorated a hallway in the school, as you probably saw walking around, in their respective Decades theme for homecoming this week. And the high school will hold the pep rally this Friday and the family fun zone for the elementary kids and school-wide. It is homecoming week. Each day has been a different theme, and we are celebrating and showing our Penfield pride. And if you want to know the days, yesterday was... Oh, my gosh, why am I blinking? Yesterday was Jersey Day. Today was superhero day. Tomorrow is baby versus boomer day. Thursday is Decades Day, and Friday is Penfield Colors.
Nice.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments for Levia? Well, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Dr. Putnam.
All right. For our superintendent reports this evening, I just have a couple of student and staff honors updates. And then I'm gonna... We have Alan McNiff in the audience. We're gonna talk about the summer work report and facilities update, as well as capital project planning. And then our very own, Mr. Jim Pfeifer, is gonna talk about the New York State 3 through 8 assessment results, which have been off embargo, and we can share with the board and the district. So, Levia, I have a minot that your friend got a perfect ACT score. Yes, I just want to make sure, because I would probably say you're right over me half the time, so... All right, but it was ACT, which is still an amazing feat, so absolutely. Carson Hobler, is that how you say his name? Hobler. So Carson Hobler, also Levia's good friend, we learned, earned a perfect composite score of 36 on the ACT exam. Only around two-tenths of 1% of students who take the ACT earn a top score. In the US high school graduating class of 2018, only 3,741 out of more than 1.9 million graduates who took the ACT earned a top composite score of 36. So just really a shout-out to Carson, and what a great feat, and really, really cool. A round of applause for Carson. Speaking of scholars, we have lots of AP scholars to announce. The AP scholars, the following Penfield High School students and 2019 graduates have been recognized as AP scholars for their outstanding results on the AP examinations last spring. I'm not gonna name all the names, but they're in our agenda. But there are a number of national AP scholar. Those students have an average of at least 4.0 on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of those exams. And so those names are all listed in the agenda. It's amazing. There's also different levels of AP scholar. AP scholar with distinction. 54 PHS students and graduates earned an average of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. It's not up there, but if we also could just do a round of applause, because our very own Levia is an AP scholar with distinction. And then AP scholar with honor. 30 PHS students and graduates earned an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of those exams. An AP scholar is 52 PHS students and graduates with scores of three or higher on three or more AP examinations. And just a reminder, we send this information every fall when the data comes out, but it's current high school students and graduates, because we had seniors who took the exams in May, but they don't get their scores back until July, and so we also want to honor those students. That is my very brief update, and I'll turn it over to Alan McNiff for the facilities update.
Gee, hi, Alan.
Hi. It's like I haven't seen you all night.
I know.
That is the quickest I've ever gotten up here since the board meeting.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Dr. Putnam, for introducing me. So tonight, yes, we have facilities update, and here are the discussion topics with that. We're gonna talk about the facilities department projects that we recently or will be completing this fall, and then also, as we normally do, look at capital project development looking forward. First, I'll start off with the projects that we have done for this summer, and will continue finishing some of them into the fall. I'll start with the high school. You'll see there's a list here, and I want to give you a little bit of information for each of them. So the West Gym floor, we refinished the entire floor in that space. The last time it was refinished is when we did the last large capital project. It's been 10 years already, so it was due. So it looks fresh and bright. You'll see an image of that later on. We are also in the process right now of changing the West Gym lights to LED lighting fixtures, and they're going to match the same LED light fixtures that we've been putting in all of the other competition spaces for the gymnasiums. So the West Gym have brighter LED lights. The Bay Trail gyms have bright LED lights. They're the same ones, and I expect to get some RGA rebates for those light fixtures that we've been installing. And the light levels will be significantly different. The Commons, the rooftop HVAC equipment, that has been over... is over 20 years old, so we replaced that this summer. For those of you who have probably realized, the intercom door release system at the high school has changed for the main entrance and the north entrance. So the doors are now locked during the normal school day, and we put a new intercom system that works cohesively with the security monitoring staff, so that they're able to visually see the folks that are coming up to the door, because it has camera integration with it. Sound system for the Commons. This was a building request that they've had on the ticket for quite some while, wanting to have something that was actually built into the infrastructure at the Commons, where they've constantly used portable units. But now they have something that has a microphone that has a bank inside the space where they can tie in any Bluetooth devices and things of that nature, and have adequate sound inside that space. The library computer room, right behind you. We renovated that completely. Went from a drab-looking space with the long, traditional tables with computers on them to more, a little bit more modern look, where they're more little clustered setups, laptop configuration, better display boards and so forth. So we redid that entire space from the floor to the ceiling to enhance the way that that looked. Reconfiguration of the Science from G8 for our new physics lab. They had increased need for physics, so we changed the configuration of that space to accommodate that program change. Replacement of asphalt outside the seating area for the cafeteria. We actually expanded that a little bit, so it gives some of the students a little bit more usage during their lunch periods outside for recreational-type stuff. Renovation, reorganization of one of the athletic storage rooms. Again, it's one of those things, if those of you have been part of our board tours, we're constantly looking at where can we make more efficiencies for storage, make ease of use for users. So Pete Chambault came to me and said, "Can we do this with another space?" And we did that. So we've changed different storage cages within inside that area. Still nice and secure, but allows the coaches to get into their particular items as they need them. That's much more adequate. Ceiling replacements, as I've talked about, for every year I've come up here is ceiling replacements throughout the district. We're getting rid of old ceilings, little at a time, and replacing them with new. And it's a... it'll be a constant thing that we'll continuously do. Then asphalt pads and bleachers at the various playing fields. So one of the things that, from the grounds perspective, I don't talk about a lot about grounds, but one of the things that we're trying to enhance for our spectators are nicer bleachers, nicer asphalt pad underneath, so it's not just sitting on grass and dirt and so forth, so it's harder to maintain as far as trimming them. So we put... we've worked with the town. The town of Penfield created asphalt pads underneath those bleachers, so that they're uniform, solid, and put a brand-new set of bleachers on top of them at a lot of our competition fields at the high school. So it's really nice for those coming in to have adequate seating and something that looks visually presentable. And then finally, here at the high school, I have a new scoreboard ordered for the pool. It's 20 years old. It's... just the other day, Pete Chambault called me and said, "Hey, we got a couple of lines are not working on the display board." Perfect timing. We expect that the new board will be installed right around Friday. So it'll be quick to go up, and it'll be nice... it'll be more... much more modern. LED display board, where you can actually put nicer graphics and so forth for those users. The folks in the... that are involved with that, and PE, and obviously athletics, have been wanting that for quite some time, so it's something we're able to accommodate this year. Bay Trail. And we have the replacement of the domestic hot water storage system. For those of you, again, we're on the board tour. We were still operating with our original 19, early '60s, storage hot water system previously up until this summer. Reason why it was replaced is because I was concerned about the structural integrity of the bottom of the penetration points in it, of them holding, and I'd rather be proactive on trying to replace that. It would be a much more efficient system and much more ease of controllability. Renovations to three of the science rooms to provide working labs for 6th grade. So there was a curriculum change or adjustment, I guess, is what I've been told, when we were working with Wynton Buddington and his staff, and looking at those spaces and changing them to become, instead of a traditional classroom, to more of a classroom slash lab environment for 6th grade. We did a lot of changes with furnishings, as well as electrical infrastructure, and we'll be continuing to finish the rest of that this October, with some of the plumbing aspects to change that curriculum, but they're very appreciative of the way that was changed and set up. But it was a great collaborative working relationship with, again, principal, staff, and many of the teachers, those three teachers in those spaces, to make that setup to the way that they want it to work for them, but yet be consistent. And then, of course, we did various ceiling replacements over there as well. At Scribner, converted two small group instructional rooms to a full-size classroom. Why we do that? More enrollment. We don't have the classroom additions built yet, however, we've got to accommodate the students coming in. And you'll see that as a running theme for the three elementary schools that have additions planned for them this coming year, so... And again, at Scribner, we had more ceiling replacements. Indian Landing, new HVAC equipment in the nurse's office. That was over 10 years old. There was a simple split HVAC air conditioning systems. We replaced that. We built a new library workroom in the library to allow for other rooms essentially to come in to accommodate another full-size classroom that we didn't have before. It used to be small group instruction, but basically it was a shell game where we had to create a library workroom for the librarian. Her library workroom became small group instruction, and that small group instruction space became a full classroom again. So, again, more enrollment and had to adjust for that, make that work. So we finished that this summer, of course. And replaced some freezer HVAC equipment that was beyond its life. And we had to modify the bus loop to accommodate additional bus. As many folks here know, we are going to be expanding the... changing that bus loop with the capital project. Unfortunately, this year, we just didn't have the space to, the way the current configuration was, to allow for that additional large bus. So this year, we worked with Marcy Ware and her staff to accommodate additional bus for their bus loop. We did, and we will get through this school year before the capital project implementation for next year. Over at Cobble's, similar to Bay Trail, we've replaced the domestic hot water storage system over there. Again, it was vintage for the original construction of the building. We converted two small group instructional spaces to a full-size classroom, again, due to enrollment needs. And the following two items were a result of that. Changing OPPT room to small group instruction, and then converting PE storage into OPPT room. So a lot of these pieces, they follow suit with a domino effect. Over at Harris Hill, we completely replaced the walk-in freezer and cooler. Just so you know, there's a lot involved with something of that nature. That was, again, vintage to that building. That involves not only demolition of the HVAC equipment, demolition of the shell of the box, essentially, the demo of the floor underneath that shell, and then the abatement of the mastic underneath that shell. So there's a... and then putting that all back together again. There's a lot of different contractors involved with that, but we got that done, and now have a brand-new unit inside there, which Joe Argento was very appreciative of. And then finally, district-wide, LED flat panel lighting in various corridors at the high school and Bay Trail. If you walk through some of the main corridors at the high school here, you'll see that there are flat panels. You won't see a light bulb. Looks like a glowing box, if you will. We were trying to implement them throughout all of the high school and all of Bay Trail for multiple reasons. One of them, obviously, energy consumption, and also just the efficiency and quality of the lighting for the staff that goes through here. The lighting is much more warmer, more welcoming, a little bit brighter of illumines throughout. So I have just a couple images to show you, but, again, like normal, these are the bigger items. There's a lot more that was done this summer. I would bore you if I went through every list of items on here, and I think I may have gotten there. But at least you got to see a general sense of the things that we've worked on. So here's a picture of the rooftop unit over at the Commons. Here is the original photos of the walk-in freezer and cooler that we had over at Harris Hill, and you'll find this quite interesting, at least I do. I was able to find the original shop drawings, which are what is used for construction, from those assemblies from 1960s in our archives. And you'll say, "Well, why is that helpful?" Well, it helped me to determine what is the thickness of the floor underneath that? What's that depth, so that we can plan accordingly of how much work is we're gonna have to do underneath that, and find out where that mastic layer is for the asbestos abatement associated and so forth. So keeping those archived documents is beneficial for us. Here's our new assembly, much nicer, and, of course, the food staff put their stuff all over the first day we built it, so... Here's an image of the demolition of the old hot water storage tank over at Cobble's. You can see the gentleman in there cutting apart the half-inch steel shell, a little at a time. And then we have our new units in here. For the... again, those of you who have been on our tours before, you've seen that we've done this previously at Harris Hill and over at Scribner as well. So very consistent, same systems. Again, controllability is much more refined. It keeps our water the way that we want to sustain it at, and much more efficient capacity as well. Here's the units over at Bay Trail. You can see... I don't have anything representation of scale, but when we go through the board tours, you can see how large a difference has changed inside that space. Now, here's an image of the West Gym in the process of being refinished. You can see there was sand in the entire surface. And then finally, the end result, which I was very pleased with, the end product. And we changed the finished material as well. We've gone with the water base system, which is the new process. With that, it gives you a better surface to actually play on. All of the NCWA courts are now done with that material as well. So it gives her a nice finish. It lasts a little bit longer, and looks fantastic. So I just want to say a couple thanks. Again, thank you for the board for allowing us to do these projects. They certainly are... a lot of them are needed for our enrollment needs and so forth, but a lot of them are enhancements to some degree. But there's also items in there that I feel more comfortable going into a school year of, "Okay, we've addressed these hot water storage tank systems. We're plus... we've resolved some of these other issues, other equipment." That just makes me feel at ease that we have comfort level of, "I'm not gonna lose a piece of equipment during the middle of the school year." So... and I choose these with Marcy and Susie, as far as prioritization of that, too. We're looking at what makes the most sense, what are my greatest concerns and so forth. So we're very systematic about how we look at that. I also want to thank Kim Adarante, our purchasing agent. Without Kim, she keeps me in check, makes sure that I'm breaking any rules, and I appreciate Kim for doing that. But there's a lot of bidding that happens with this. There's a lot of procurement process for a lot of this work. There's significant amount of money that goes through. Without her help, I couldn't do this, and I greatly appreciate that. Obviously, I want to thank our taxpayers for the financial support with these projects as well. Hopefully, they understand the money that we put into these things are certainly for the benefit of our students. And then finally, our buildings and grounds and custodial team do an excellent job of implementing and doing these projects with our contractors and a lot of the work that they do themselves, and very much appreciated considering all the other work that goes on in the buildings with just getting them prepared for school, when there's summer school here, reading program after reading program there, so on and so forth. So they have to juggle those things, and they make it happen, and I really appreciate the work that they do. So besides projects...
Yeah.
This has been a hot topic of everybody asking me about the robotic auto mowers in the courtyards. I can't put... "Why are we doing this?" It's not a novelty, okay? There's a reason why I decided to do this, and I wanted to spend a few minutes just to talk about that. So why are we... why did I decide to do this? So we have challenges with our courtyards. We have three of them at the high school. I have one over at Bay Trail. So there's 31,000 square feet of space in the courtyards right now. They're logistically... only can be done when they're either after school or on Saturdays. I can't run a mower, a traditional mower, in our courtyards during the school day, just from obvious reasons. So, okay, how can we deal with that? The other difficulties that we have is bringing the lawnmower in through the building. So I've gotta send it to this courtyard, or send it to a different courtyard. So, I mean, staff's coming in through the gas-powered mower, the smells, the grass clippings, and everything comes along with it, has been a nuisance for decades, as far as I'm concerned. It really has. I mean, my predecessors had to deal with it. The building had to deal with it. Our staff had to deal with it. And obviously, a lot of times in the spring or fall, we can't get to it. You know, there's other things going on, athletic events, other needs throughout the district that are higher priorities. The grass grows, and it looks unfortunately bad. But keep in mind, too, is there's a cost that comes with having to do that maintenance on weekends. That means the staff is getting overtime to come out here and mow those lawns and so forth. So how can we curtail that? So this technology came about a couple of years ago. I've been looking into it, and I wanted to find out, "Okay, will this actually work for us beneficially when it comes to, from a financial standpoint, and efficiency of staff resources and time?" So here are the benefits. So the equipment has its own little docking station in the courtyard. The mowing can happen at any time due to its quiet operation. Throughout the day, you can't hear it. It really makes hardly no noise. It's not like a mower where it has a mower running. It's just basically a spinning apparatus underneath it that cuts the grass. It's running during the evenings. It runs during the rain, if need be. It has technology, and it built into it that it knows where it needs to go at certain times. So... and it knows where it needs to go back to its home base. We understand it's like a Roomba, right? But just for grass. So... but it always maintains a consistent grass height. It's... I love when I come into the building now, where I don't have the anxiety of, "Oh, the courtyard looks horrible. We haven't done this." And that's important. I think it's important for us to have a good appearance for not only visitors, but our students, and how it looks. So they look out those courtyards constantly. There is minimum maintenance with that equipment. Our custodians are easily able to take them apart, replace any of the blade structures that they have underneath, very simple, and put it back into operation. There's apps associated with it, so they have understanding of how long it's mowed for, and it gives them a signal of, "Okay, you have to do this maintenance." It's pretty clean. It's safe, so if a student decides to go out there in the library to pick up the unit, immediately shuts off, and we get notification that somebody picked it up. So there... it's certainly something that we tried out, make sure, before we implemented, because I can see kids trying to do things with it. But they have been. They've been... they've worked out really well, and the kids actually respect the equipment. We don't have any exhaust emissions, and we're not dragging grass smell and so... and everything else throughout the building. So I also looked at this from a cost-effective standpoint, and I calculated that it's... the return on investment is approximately two years, give or take. And that's based upon the cost of the equipment, which we get off of government pricing. We don't pay what the normal person, layman on the street. So we get a much reduced cost to purchase this equipment. But also, I don't have that labor cost. I'm not paying the overtime for that staff on a weekly basis to come out here and mow the courtyards. So that adds up when you think about the time that's associated with that throughout the normal operational year. So I felt very comfortable with moving forward with this equipment, and with the benefits outweighed those pieces. So I thought it was important to mention that it's not a novelty. It's something that we want to do for efficiency and functionality.
Alan, can I ask you just a question? With those, first of all, as a former principal here, you're understating the concern from staff and students when the grass would get too long. It really became an issue. Our kids would see it, they'd comment on it. So it's such an amazing thing. But more importantly, can you work to get a video of like a cat riding on it? Because those Roomba videos with the cats get a lot of clicks, and I think maybe we could... we could put that out.
Put on our YouTube channel.
All right. Or the squirrel.
We could have the squirrel.
Thanks. I think they're amazing.
Well, and the other thing, I didn't... I don't list it up here, but it's also... it's a health issue, too, in some regards, because our univentilators, it's the HVAC equipment in the classrooms.
Yeah.
If the grass is tall, allergens, right? They can... it can hold more of those allergens, especially this time of year and early spring. The grass is shorter, not as much can go be brought into that intake system and part of that. So it's a nice benefit off to the side, but not a primary benefit.
The courtyards look great. They really do. Thanks.
And you didn't... you didn't want to use goats, right?
Don't give anybody any ideas.
No, no, no.
There would be just dirt out there.
I know. It would go right down to... and then you'd have to feed the goats, and then you'd have to clean up after them.
Mowers for the rooftop garden. Go ahead. Well, they expect at least five to seven years, at the very least. They have their warranty, limited warranty, that time period. So if I had a smaller lawn, I'd be buying one. So they're really nice. And I'm not... we're not the only district that's done this. A lot of my counterparts have also considered and implemented as well with courtyards. So it's a nice... it's nice technology. I think our robotics program has a lot to do with that, as these students develop into engineers into the future, for sure. So... yeah, go ahead, Kelvin. The approximate cost per each unit?
Yes.
I can tell you, I spent about $5,000 for all four units, thereabouts.
That's good.
Yeah, not too bad, because of the government pricing. And they're different. So larger courtyard like the library, the unit's just a little bit bigger than some of the other three. But the manufacturer, I won't list the manufacturer, but they have different sizes for different size of lawns. So you... it depends on how far you want to go, right? Too big for that. There is some technology that's out there, which I'm not comfortable yet, for auto mowers, like big mowers. I've seen a little demo on them. I'm not comfortable with a big mower that's 72-inch deck mowing around our fields with nobody on it. But I think the technology will eventually get there. We also looked at robotic floor machines, so the machines that the custodian rides on. We did a demo here at the high school with the unit. They're expensive, too. They're fairly expensive. That... I thought it was interesting technology. I don't think it's there yet for, obviously, from an efficiency standpoint, but I expect it will be at some point. But it was safe. It operated slowly, but we'll see as time goes on with regards to that, too. And with these systems, it's not just... it doesn't just bump into the walls. There's a perimeter line that's installed. Contractor did that as part of the service for us. They installed the line in our courtyards, so it knows where its perimeter is, so it doesn't go beyond that piece. So with the outside mowers, you have to... it's GPS coordinated. They are also... I'm getting to... I'm sorry if I'm getting into the weeds. But you're also seeing line striping machines that are starting to be autonomous as well. So, you know, painting a football field, lacrosse or lacrosse field, and so on. They haven't developed enough fields yet for this region, and most of the United States, but Europe is significant into that. There's a lot that comes into logistics with that, like is the hopper size for the tank big enough and so on? But I think it's important to look at those. What's the balance between the costs of that piece? Is it still a novelty, too much, or does it weigh itself out in the benefit piece? And I just think that other technology will eventually get there, but these, from a cost standpoint, just made sense to do that, so... Does that answer your question, Kelvin? Sure.
Any other questions or comments for Alan?
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm going to continue now with capital project development and looking forward. Um, if you remember last, last year, I, I also talked about this. We currently have our current capital project, uh, for the classroom additions underway. Uh, we're bidding that now. Um, hope to have nice bids on October 1st when we open them, um, and we'll start construction in the spring, as you know. And shortly there behind that is the other capital project that, um, we voted on in May for some various roof locations, uh, as well as the synthetic turf replacement and resurfacing of the track, and the replacement of the 20-year-old chiller over at Cobble's. Uh, again, it's that thinking in advance before the equipment goes down, sort of thing. But we have to look beyond that, in my opinion, and a lot of us here, I think, would agree with me. We have to look at what's that, what's possibly down the line here. So, um, there is this information that I shared last year, but I thought it was important to share it with our new board members and any of the public that may, uh, be interested. Talking about what we have from a facilities overview standpoint, we have 154 acres of land being utilized, approximately 900,000 square feet of building space. The estimated replacement cost of our structures is $172 million, and that's based upon our assurance, uh, and valuation. If you average the expected life of our infrastructure for 30 years, that equates to about $5.7 million of anticipated renovation costs. Okay, so keep that number in mind. Over our capital project vote history, for the last 29 years, we've spent $150 million on those projects. Therefore, that's about $5.2 million a year. It's less than, you look at that balance, right? But I wanted to remind you of what those projects included. They included various classroom additions, bigger parking lots, bigger stadiums. We've enhanced our facilities, so forth. So, my point in bringing this up is, it's not a direct comparison of those numbers, because a lot of that, should say at least a decent amount of that money, went to enhancements of what we had, right? It wasn't just upkeep. So, the point here I'm trying to make is, is our needs are still there. They're, they're still beyond what we've expenditures, uh, and so forth. So, it's that balance of figuring out what makes sense now and into the future as we develop other capital projects. But just knowing that is a, is a place marker, if you will. We have a facilities committee. Uh, we have various, uh, members on it from the Penfield District, obviously, um, administration-wise, as well as a couple of board members here. Um, we have our consultants and partners, uh, SCA, SCI Design, uh, Architects, and Campus Construction, our construction manager, that basically is our steering committee. We, I'm going to talk about that a little bit further, but, um, obviously, we talk about a lot. We talk about potential scope, the needs of the district, prioritization of that, cost and aid evaluation, and obviously, schedule, too. We're not just doing this in a box, we're working collectively as a team, as much as a homeowner would do for their own house. So, I wanted to get into, and again, this is, uh, a lot of this is geared more towards new members and public, uh, that haven't run through this, but I wanted to go through how a scope of work developed for capital projects. So, a lot of it always get, most of it, most of it gets kicked off by a five-year building condition survey. So, SCD re, uh, requires us to do that. We basically evaluate all of our, um, facilities. We use, um, our architectural team and their consultants and district stakeholders as a cooperative group to develop that. So, basically, it's a whole huge list of all of our short and long-term needs and wants, uh, for our, whether it be our academic programs or athletic programs, the facility side, transportation, IT department, you name it. Everything comes under that umbrella. And we're supposed to conduct that on a five-year basis, and we, and we always have. Uh, I wanted to briefly mention that SCD is changing that a little bit here. Um, they're, they get inundated because they don't have a tapered system. They have the, they traditionally had every district in New York State doing it at the exact same time, which translates to a problem for them, in terms, translating to a problem for all the consultants throughout the state. So, they're looking at, and they will be, um, developing a, uh, series of spreading that out over fi- five years. I don't know yet, and they can't answer for us yet, when we will fit next. So, as, at, uh, 2020 is the next required cycle. I don't know if we'll be at year 2020, uh, 2021, 2022, we just don't know yet. So, that's okay. We, we know, we have a pretty good understanding from our last BCS, and as well as us understanding what our needs are, uh, of looking at what we still need to implement for capital projects. So, as the next bullet item kind of mentions here is, we have, need to understand the short and long-term range for our, um, recyc, replacement cycle for building materials and equipment, windows, HVAC equipment, mechanical equipment. A lot of that's my responsibility. I need to know where our next priorities are going to be. I don't need a design team to tell me, oh, your equipment's failing. We, we own that, as, as the Buildings and Grounds Department of understanding that. But a lot, but the other aspects are going to come into instructional needs, what are the athletic needs, and those pieces. So, we, we are always talking district-wide about what are those needs, um, internally and, and looking forward. So, we're going to obviously prioritize on safety and security, then academic programs, and then infrastructure enhancements. And of course, we need to understand the proper financial planning that's associated with any capital project, the aidability, the aid flow, the debt service, a lot of those parameters that we need to, to go through. Um, I showed this last year when it came to roof, uh, cycle tracking as far as replacement. The, this is just a graphic representation, again, for new board members. Essentially, this is a tool I use not only just for roofs at this point, I've incorporated this into all of our mechanical equipment of, the, on the left-hand side is basically, um, the item and the building that it's associated with, and a, basically, a tracking of duration of the longevity of that piece of equipment or roof area. So, you can see the blue line represents a moment in time, uh, green is where our, that particular item is in good standing, yellow is where I start to have a little bit more concern, and red is when I'm, we're concerned about potentially failure. So, that's something that we work on in our office as far as, um, replacement cycle for, um, roofs and mechanical equipment and other infrastructure pieces. So, we use that as part of the tool as far as prioritization of what we do. So, looking down the road here, next potential, um, capital project, um, we've talked about time and time again, is obviously the new buildings, um, for, in location for the transportation part and bus garage and the Buildings and Grounds Department. I think that's been on the BCS for the last three decades, it feels like. Um, at least since I've been here, it's almost a decade, it feels like. Um, so, we feel, that's still a priority that we feel has got to, got to be addressed. Um, some of the other building condition survey items that are going to be potentially in this project, various window replacements at Harris Hill and Indian Landing, new cabinets and countertops in the classrooms at Cobble's and Indian Landing, um, toilet room renovations at the high school in Cobble's, electrical panel upgrades, um, and obviously, more various roofing locations, and some of the security enhancements throughout the diff, district that may come about from the result of our recent security audit. So, these are just some examples of what, um, will potentially go be included in that project that we'll talk about in our facilities committee meetings. And I wanted to show some of those images so you have an understanding, and I've looked at, shown some of this with you, uh, during our board tours, but I wanted to, to highlight a couple of those pieces. This is over at Harris Hill. You're looking at window sills and the windows, they are original to the 1960s building over there. You can see the weathering is just whirled away at the slate sills, the windows themselves are leaking and so forth. So, again, it's not all the windows within that building, um, there's about half of them that haven't been replaced. Uh, so, we'll be looking, I think it's, I'm going to suggest we, we do that. Uh, this is a representation of the cabinets over at, um, Cobble's, very similar to, uh, Indian Landing, where you can see that the face of the material has delaminated in various locations. Uh, certainly aesthetic issue, but it starts to be, um, a safety issue. We, uh, in our, in our department, we actually try to maintain and keep that, so we don't have, um, um, any irregular edges for the students. So, we, we do work to maintain them, to keep them in check, but something we certainly need to look at doing that. And going along with that is going to be asbestos abatement for the floor tile underneath that. So, some of this stuff is, we can't just do the cabinets, we're going to have to do the floor tile at the exact same time. Those are the things that we'll look at during the process of evaluating a capital project. Uh, here is a, um, the boys' toilet room over at Cobble's. Again, it's pretty much vintage to the original construction of the building, definitely needs to be, um, upgraded to new fixtures, um, and much nicer environment, of course. Uh, this is the, a picture of old, um, circuit breakers for the high school. Down in the, what used to be the original main distribution panel for the electrical system. So, don't think that's our main primary system at this point, but there's, these are some old breakers that, um, should be replaced with new components. Uh, these are the, uh, windows inside the pool over at the high school here. The windows, you see, oh, they just look dirty, Alan. No, they're not. Um, just that corrosive environment has caused that to wear over the last 20 years of the life of the pool to cause the glass to turn, uh, to have that, um, permanency that you see there on the images. So, I just want to replace them for obvious reasons. They still work, just aesthetically, they're not looking the greatest, and eventually, uh, the aluminum is, uh, going to have problems. Uh, here's a bathroom over at the high school. Again, vintage, this is right behind the main office area, obviously, very dated. Um, functionality that you don't see here, um, is in the walls. So, all of that piping from the 50s is still in those walls. I can't get parts, I can't even get there and there to do some of the equipment without tearing walls out. Becomes very invasive to get into those things, and I don't want to lose bathrooms at the high school. I, Howard Henneck and Leslie would agree with me on that. But, um, but anyways, those are the type of things that we're, we're looking at. And the last image I have for you here is of the commons at the high school. I think there's been so many comments about trying to revamp the commons into something that's much more pleasing for our students to use. It is tired, it has been used beyond its life of what it currently looks at, so I think it makes sense for us to look at something that's going to be more attractive and more user-friendly for various different functions that are, that are conducted inside the commons area. So, next steps. So, we're going to work at developing the specific scope, um, while we're looking at the accurate conceptual cost. So, right now, we've just got targets from our building condition survey for a lot of these items, but we're going to have to look at them more specifically, look at quantities in more exact, basically refine the values of potential scope. We're going to evaluate the financial aspects of that estimate, look at aidability, how does that all relate? How does that, how does that work out on aid flow and so forth? And then we'll determine a schedule for the project duration, vote date, SCD review, and then construction time, and then how that aid flows. So, there's a lot that goes with the wheel of, um, public work and how that works. And you know the timing of how long it takes for work to actually happen and have a project done. Uh, so, it's just a reminder, we constantly have to look at what the next project could possibly be. Uh, all of this will be, obviously, done through the, um, steering committee, facilities committee meetings, um, to review all of those aspects and to make sure that we're all on the same page as homeowners, if you will, about what our future should be as far as capital project implementation. So, with that, I kind of summarized that as quickly as, uh, I could here, but I wanted to, obviously, give you an overview of what that potential look down the road might be.
Barb?
Alan, for the new classrooms that are, um, going to be started in the spring, will all three buildings start their classrooms at the same time, or will it be staggered?
We're going to start site construction at all three buildings at the same time. We will not start foundations immediately at Indian Landing based on some of the logistical issues with that piece over there, which is fine. Uh, we'll start that in the summertime period. Uh, basically, we can't get some abatement work done until summer happens for that particular building, but I can tell you, our, we will have contractors at each of those sites starting in the springtime doing work. We'll be starting staging areas and starting some of our site preparation work and so forth. Speaking of that, we've had a lot of communication with each of the building principals and their staff about what to expect. We will continue to do that, and working with our construction managers, uh, will make sure that it's seamless as much as possible, but it will be a little bit disruptive, but to keep that as a minimum as much, as much as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wow, that was a lot, but.
Can I?
Yes, indeed.
Just a, a comment, I think, and the board, um, knows this as we do board tours and look around, but the number of times we have visitors here who just always comment on how good things look, how the hallways are clean, how things are picked up, how, so, and that's the work that you, your, your vision around that, but then your crew of B&amp;G and custodians and the work they do. So, just a huge kudos of, um, I just came back from a conference where districts are talking about, you know, having to replace all of their roofing because they haven't been doing it on a regular basis. It's kind of tough to pass a capital project for millions of dollars when the only thing you're doing is, is roofing for $40 million. Um, so, just kudos to Alan for doing that and always kind of, uh, staying on top of it. It's, it does cause a lot of, um, problems to go away in the future, because you're not dealing with it at the last minute, so.
And that become, if it's in a capital project, you get the aid flow for it.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that's certainly a benefit, um, for, by far, for sure. And I just wanted to say a little bit with that is, our staff care about our buildings.
They do.
They have the ownership, they feel it's their house, and they want to save the money, and can we, can we save money on doing this? Where, where is that benefit piece, you know? They actually have that ownership, I can honestly say that, every one of our staff members, which is fantastic.
That is wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, we'll, uh, turn over to Mr. Pfeifer to give us a rundown of our New York State 3-3-8 ELA math and science assessment results.
So, uh, if, if any board members have, uh, attended either, uh, of the last two years opening day presentations, you've heard me talk about psychologically safe classrooms, and one of the elements of that is demonstrating fallibility. So, tonight, I have an example. It may either be me demonstrating fallibility, or it may be karma for me giving Mrs. Gregory a hard time about her technology skills. However, what I realized during Alan's presentation is that the PowerPoint that I gave to Sharon for tonight is not the final version of the PowerPoint. It was a draft. I have the final version of the PowerPoint on my computer, and I'm told by our wonderful TV crew over there that I can simply unplug the HDMI cable and plug it into my computer so that I can do the presentation and then send it over so that Sharon can send it to the board for you later. So, this, I think, will be a first, because I know I haven't done this in my now seventh year here sitting at meetings, so.
Are you going to, are you going to do that right now?
I am going to attempt to unplug that HDMI cable and plug it into my machine, and hopefully we will get an image.
All right.
Let's see what happens.
Drum roll.
Drum roll.
All right, drum roll.
Sorry, Mark, I knocked over your sign.
And Jim, there's just no escaping karma. I'm just.
No, it'll always get you in the end, right? Let's see. Mm-hmm. This is not promising at the moment.
Hey!
Well, that's not the view we want, so let's just do, uh, display settings, because you don't want to see all that, and we'll hide my presenter view, and I think that will do the trick. One more time? Maybe? It's thinking. It is.
You know what's best is it's really quiet, and I bet, I bet you can't hear that mower You know what's best is it's really quiet, and I bet you can't hear that mower outside right now.
I'm going to try one more.
Are the lights on? It's got headlights, what?
Oh, it didn't like that. Oh, there we go. Hey, all right, we're in business.
Excellent, nice.
Okay, so thank you for your patience there.
That's great.
I apologize for that. So as Dr. Putnam said, we're going to go over...
I got to stop you for a minute. Just in case the board didn't notice, Jim just took all of the stuff we're working on with SEL and made this mistake a learning experience. I just, you really practice what you preach, and I appreciate that.
I had to come up with a story while he was talking.
It was great, I thought it was wonderful.
I didn't feel emotionally safe at all, but he made fun of me.
I own it.
All right, well, he's got, you know, none of us are perfect.
Demonstrating fallibility, in many ways.
All right, thank you.
So as Tom mentioned, the 3-8 assessment results, the embargo was lifted so I can share that information with the board. I can't share anything yet regarding regions results. That embargo isn't typically lifted until late October, early November. We shoot to try and get in at the end of October so that we can share that information and data with you before our principals come in and present their action plans. It will be dependent on the timeline from the Board of Regions, so we'll see what happens. But happy to share the results of the 3-8 ELA math and then science with you as well. So we start off with a look at our 3-5 ELA assessments. And for new board members, the way this is set up, the top bar shows us our by-grade level performance, and those percentages are percent 3 and 4, so percent proficiency. In parentheses, you see what that equates to in terms of ranking in the state, and then the state proficiency levels are on that lowest bar, New York State there below it. So you can see our proficiencies at ELA 3, 4, and 5, well above the state averages, and when you consider the fact that we have 700 school districts in New York State and you take a look at those rankings, they remain very positive. Below that, in the two boxes, we do a smaller comparison to just our cohort in Monroe 1 BOSIs. So the first is proficiency, which is students, percent of students achieving at levels 3 and 4. And then on the right-hand side is mastery, that's just the percentage of students achieving at level 4, the highest level for those assessments. So that's ELA 3 through 5, and looking the same setup for math 3 through 5. Very pleased with that mastery and proficiency ranking by our 5th graders there, number 1 in Monroe County with our cohort, which is a tough one to achieve, but continuing to do very well and very well compared to the state averages as well. Science, again, 4th grade is the year that this is administered. That's going to be changing in about two years. We'll be moving into 5th grade for the science exam, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into our findings and recommendations moving forward. But our 4th grade students tend to do very, very well on the science exam. And when you look at some of these percentages and the rankings, and especially with the science exam, we're talking about percents, sometimes partial percents, which can mean one or two kids either way that shift these rankings. In some cases, we're splitting hairs, so it's always very, very close. Moving into the middle school results for grades 6 through 8. Again, same setup. We've tended to be in the middle of the pack with ELA for 6 through 8, and we've remained consistent with that. But again, positive compared to the state. And then math and proficiency toward the upper portion of Monroe 1 BOSIs, much better than the state averages, and in the middle of the pack for our mastery ratings. Science, it's important to keep in mind that our students, and also with math, I'll go back to for a second, that in math 8, our students who take algebra, which is approximately 175 or so kids, they don't take the math 8 New York State exam. And then the same is true for science, for our students who take living environment regions, they don't take the science 8 exam. So you've got some of our highest performing students potentially not taking those tests, and so our levels of proficiency and mastery are a little bit lower on the science end. So key findings, some things to be thinking about moving forward. Our comparative results, as I mentioned, compared to the state, compared to Monroe 1 BOSIs, remain positive. We continue to see a positive impact of our RTI model and the consistency of our curricula as our teachers have more and more ability to talk about consistent goals for our students, compare common assessments for our students and those results, and then talk about those engaging strategies with our students. That continues to have a positive impact. We did notice an impact with computer-based testing this year for the first time in math. On the constructed response, we had negative gaps to BOSIs in some cases, which is a first for us. So that raises a bit of concern. In some cases, when we had students who were engaging in CBT and they had to show their work and they didn't have the ability like we have with the pens to show their work on the computer in that more authentic way that they're used to on paper, that caused some problems for us and for our students, especially if they, you know, if we talked about, for example, a time, a timeline for time, for measuring time, or bar models that they had a difficult time creating without the ability to use a pen-type device. So that was, that's an area of concern that we need to look at. We didn't really see any negative impact in terms of the ELA test, though. The results seemed to be consistent there. We still continue to look at the revision of the test. You recall, two years ago, we went from three days of testing down to two, and while math has still been pretty efficient to administer, that second day of ELA testing has still been a bit of a strain on students. It's still taking a very long time. The number of questions that were eliminated, the number of passages was pretty limited, and so we still see stamina with students who may be testing for an hour and a half, two hours, sometimes more. Those numbers are dwindling, but it's still something that we're concerned about and something that we're thinking about as we talk about the progression of CBT. We have not seen any significant changes. We moved to outsourced scoring for the second year in a row. You recall, we switched over to premier through a BOSI service, so we're getting aid back on that, and it's keeping our teachers in the classroom. So we saw when we did a cost analysis, it's about a wash in terms of money, but then we get the aid back, and that's very helpful. So we haven't seen any negative impacts due to that. The one thing our teachers will say is they're not seeing the test as much. They see the test during administration, but they're not getting that training and seeing the questions or the answers or the way our students are responding as closely as they used to, but we've been, they haven't, that was the first year, and after that, we haven't really heard much about that. It's still very difficult to gauge the impact of test refusals. Our refusals were down, and we were closer to probably 25%, 23% at the middle school level, and about 12% or so at the elementary school level. So our participation rates are up a little bit, but it's scattered. We can't pinpoint one particular group of students who aren't taking the test. Sometimes it's very high-performing students, sometimes it's low-performing students. So it's really tough to gauge that impact and what that looks like. The other big question we have right now is the future of computer-based testing. We had heard that, you know, this coming spring was going to be the deadline, it was going to be required, and then it got pushed, and it was going to be 2021. Now with the resignation of Commissioner Elliott and an interim in place, what we've heard is they're still committed to doing it, but there is no firm timeline as to when it's going to take place. So when we look at that fact that we don't have a firm timeline, that we have some concerns about the impact on our students' performance, we're questioning the future of CBT right now for us here in the district. We'll actually be meeting with our instructional leadership team tomorrow and looking to make a decision because the principals have to order their assessments one way or another within about the next month or so. And so for math especially, we're really maybe taking another look. Our plan this year had also been to layer in 3 through 5 ELA, but as we continue to see those times creeping up and some concerns about typing proficiency still at those levels, the state recommends that kids can type a little bit more efficiently than our students are able to now despite the fact that we've been engaging in some keyboarding instruction with our kids. We still need a little bit more time to get them caught up, and so we're hesitant to layer on ELA 3 through 5, but we'll be firming up those decisions tomorrow with our principals to see where we're going to go with that. You know, we'll continue to work, our opportunities for improvement are to continue to work on assessment and feedback, looking at formative assessment, seamless assessment and instruction, and giving students feedback on their progress toward our learning goals has been something that we've been working on for a few years now. That will remain at the forefront of one of our strategies to keep working with, along with those evidence and research-based instructional strategies and really weaving in the social-emotional components. As we continue to build better relationships with our students, better motivating them with more engaging activities, we believe we'll continue to see positive results. And we're going to continue to look at our RTI model and improve upon that. While it's very robust and we're able to provide a lot of small group intervention to our students, we do have opportunities to improve that model in terms of goal-setting, progress monitoring, and pulling back on interventions when students are ready and demonstrated readiness to be successful without those interventions. So we definitely still have some work to do, but things continue to be pretty positive from our perspective, so happy to take any questions.
Board members, Lisa.
Two things, I have a question on, around computer-based testing. So if our students are having difficulty showing work, how are they expected to show work? Like, how do they, if they're not using pen and paper, like, are they supposed to be making graphs in Excel or...
No, not typically Excel. There's a window that they can, if you have a pen-enabled device, they could draw like they could paper pencil, right? Or they can use a mouse to draw that, or they can type with a keyboard or use the typical drawing tools to create boxes and things like that. And while our students have had some experiences with that, it's not a lot, and then you don't know exactly what the question's going to be. And I'll go back to that time model example, the way that we taught students to solve those problems that was consistent with our math expressions resource didn't work well with showing that without a pen-enabled device. And we're just not there. Our processes to, as we're replacing the student laptops, we're moving toward these devices that are pen-enabled or another similar device that would have that functionality, but we just don't have enough of them to deploy them across the district during testing. And one of the things the state says is you can't parse that out. All students have to be tested on a similar device, so we can't give some students that capability and not give others. And within the testing windows, we just can't spread the ones that we do have out enough. We'd have to be moving them between buildings.
Right.
It would be very, very difficult. So as time goes on, in the next few years, as we continue to replace laptops with these type of devices, we'll have that capability, and then we'll see where we are with relation to computer-based testing, and maybe we'll be ready to try that again at that point. But we'll see where we are.
So my follow-up is similar. In districts that are doing like one-to-one computer devices, and if we're thinking about that, are students then tested on their own device so that they're, like, they're used to their device and they can do that, or is that not allowed?
That's a really good question. You have to lock, you have to secure the devices. There's a lot of steps that our technology department has to take with all devices that are going to be used for testing to lock them down. So I don't know how this, like, you know, a district that is doing that on a large scale, how they manage that process of locking down the computers to the level they would have to if they're the student devices, because students sometimes are taking them home or all those things. I'm not really sure how that would work.
Yeah, I was just curious.
I would assume they don't, they're not doubling up, they're not a two-to-one district, so I would assume they have a process for doing that somehow and allowing the students to use their own devices, but that to me is something we haven't even gotten into yet.
Mark?
You mentioned RTI, and when you talk about RTI, I always think of that as in elementary school. Is there RTI or an equivalent in the middle school? Or is that strictly an elementary thing?
No, we have, actually...
In my mind, that's always what I think about as elementary.
Yep, we have it at Bay Trail. It looks differently because of, you know, the construct of the building, the way student schedules works, it looks a little bit differently. So often when you see the classes under 15 reports, sometimes in the past you've seen a class on there that says RTIS, right? It's a math RTIS. So those are typically math classes that have a smaller student population in them, and they may also have, the supported means there's an additional adult in the room, so maybe a special educator or a teaching assistant is assigned to that class. And then sometimes those classes will meet, instead of typically the core courses at the middle school level will meet three times a cycle, or two times a cycle, those classes sometimes will meet three times a cycle to provide some additional opportunities for the teacher to go back and reteach the skills that the students haven't got. And then we also have our reading teachers supporting literacy and things like that at the middle school level. At the high school level, actually, Dr. Putnam and I just met with the high school team. They've revamped the Academic Success Center yet again, and with the help of the new Assistant Director for Professional Learning, they have a Microsoft Form system and app set up through Microsoft Forms where teachers can submit tickets and information about the work that kids need to focus on in the Academic Success Center. That goes to the teachers who are assigned to the success center. Students are signing in on a computer, looking at their prioritized work from their teachers, also giving some feedback on how they're doing socially and emotionally that day. The teacher in the success center can see that, help the student with the assignments they need to see. They report back right through this app, and it sends a message back to their content area teacher to say, hey, this student accomplished the task that you had set forth for them, this is how I thought they did working on it, what would you like them to do next? And that's across content area. So any student can be in the Academic Success Center and scheduled into that for a time, and then the teams of teachers can look with the administrator and say, you know what, this student's got it, they're handling things, they don't need that additional supportive time in the success center anymore, or they don't need as much, and they can scale back on that student's schedule and have that student returned to other classes or electives. So it is, it's K-12. We've got examples of it.
I just want to add too, Jim and I had talked when we got a presentation of the Academic Success Center and the work that they're doing, because it's not unknown for people when they hear about response intervention to think K-5, because that's really was the easiest way to roll out for every district. But as we continue to build upon that, and Jim's team's been incredible, it's really trying to find ways to support those students who are struggling at grade level and also those enriched students and how we can work through that with our RTI model, which as a reminder for the board is, is a diamond in Penfield, right? So it's not just getting the struggling students up to grade level, but it's also, what are we doing for those students or above? So I have talked to the team of the Academic Success Center. I'd love for them to get in before a meeting so the board can see it in action at the high school, and it's a really unique thing they're doing. So I also may have said, get ready, we're presenting at a conference, which then everybody moans, but it's really, it's really pretty cool what they're doing. And the other thing I just thought was exciting is at the high school, they have put all-new entrants immediately into the Academic Success Center. So if you were a 9th grader who went to school, sorry, let's say a 10th grader who was going to school in a different district last year, you transferred to Penfield, you're starting in the Academic Success Center, so immediately an adult knows where you are, how are you doing, proactively, instead of waiting and saying, six weeks in, you know, Tom doesn't get it, he's really fallen behind, and we need to get him into the Academic Success Center. So it's just this mindset shift, which is really cool, sort of that, it's sort of a universal screening for new students into Penfield, where we don't have any data except for what's shared on a report card. So they've been doing a lot of good work, still a work in progress, like all RTIs, it's always sort of changing and shifting, but all across K-12, and I'll just take time to just say, you know, Jim's team has been fantastic with this, all the directors working with the principals to make sure that we're focusing in on that research piece behind it.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Nice, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. All right. Okay. All right, Sharon, I'm assuming we're going right there?
Yep.
All right. Okay. Board members, we're on item 8. Due to a recent retirement at district office, there is a need to appoint a new deputy purchasing agent. Resolved, the Board of Education appoint Christine Schopel as deputy purchasing agent for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. May I have a motion in a second? Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Monroe County School Board Association Committee meetings, information exchange. Emily, you were able to go, do you have anything you want to share from the meeting?
I do not. I sent out an email.
That's, that's fine.
Dr. Putnam and his team did great.
Yeah, I heard it was the best information exchange ever. People have been writing in for miles around.
I think Channel 8...
We did present, Emily was there, really, I was there, but the presentation was really Dr. Maloney and Mr. Buddington around the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and how we give it every two years and how we present to the board that information and how we actually use that to define some of our curricular changes when it comes to health. And it was great. I mean, after that was the executive committee that Catherine may speak about, but the number of boards that haven't heard their Youth Risk Behavior Survey results and weren't as up to speed with it is sort of the questions that came up. So I gave fair warning to superintendents ahead of time that we were presenting it, because I'm, it's one of those things I'm really proud of in this district, is that we give the Youth Risk Behavior Survey from 6th grade to 12th grade. Parents can opt out if they want to, but that data, we've really been able to use to determine how we're doing things with drinking and driving and vaping and e-cigarettes, as well as the positive stuff we get, in terms of how much sleep our students are getting and how much TV they're not watching, is pretty exciting, and physical activity and things like that. So I appreciate Emily being there for your first information exchange, and I just wanted to give kudos to Wynton and Leslie, who did a great job putting that all together. And of course, anytime you see something I'm presenting, the woman behind all of it is Nancy Bradstreet, because I send her things and say, work your magic, and then she makes the PowerPoint look wonderful. So thanks for all Nancy's behind-the-scenes work.
That's nice. Okay, and Tom just mentioned about executive committee, we were there, was it just last week?
Yeah.
Wow, it seems like a long time ago.
Was it last week? Two weeks ago.
Okay, that's probably why it seemed like a long time ago. And Tom, I'll let you speak to it, but we, the topic was about the census.
Sure, it was about, it's really exciting, it feels like a trailer to a good movie, which is Census 2020. So not to be confused with our district census that we send out to our district residents every year, do we do a census every year? Which is really trying to help with enrollment. As Mr. McNiff talked about, we're shuffling everybody around to find new classrooms and build new classrooms because of the enrollment increases we're seeing. But this is the National Federal 2020 Census, they do it every 10 years, and they were really looking for school districts to help get the information out. And it's really important is that that census that happens every 10 years, the big piece for us as schools and communities is they use that data to determine where grants are going. So, you know, if you have a large population of people living in poverty or people speaking a different language other than English, like, there's grants and they're tied, the federal grants, and they're tied to what comes out in the census. So you'll see some things, we talked about probably putting something out to our constituents just as encouragement to do the census. It's the first year the census can be done online, and so they talked a lot about the security behind that. And, but if you don't want to do it online, then you can do it by telephone, and then if they don't hear from you, because each month they sort of keep pushing, then you'll get a paper copy in the mail, and then if you still don't do it, you will probably get a home visit from someone asking you to answer some questions on the census. So it's really just encouraging people. It's all extremely confidential, the information isn't shared except for the data that they[1712.65] pull in with regards to who's living where and all those demographic pieces of information that the government is trying to determine. But the biggest one for us is grants and the possibility of funding tied to how many people are living here and things like that.
Is that, I think it was about it?
Yes, but then, you know, beyond that is also about congressional representation.
Yes.
The population, our representatives, how many we have is determined by how many people live there.
Yes.
And so, because there's been so much migration out of upstate, western New York, that could change, and we'll see what happens with that. And Tom already mentioned it about the security behind the process, but she really, really, really emphasized about security. I think there is, from their perspective, a very big concern that people will be concerned about that. But she, again, made it clear that you don't have to do it online. What really is important is that people do it.
Yep.
Just to get that accurate count. A lot is, you know, a lot is, a lot of, that information provides, what am I trying to say? That there's a lot of things that are dependent on that information. That's what I'm trying to say. I got it out.
I did say, once they said that funding was tied to it, I did say, I might say that